Yeah, that's what we're shooting at, yeah.
Yeah, it's not a goal for what is a goal for.
Commercial vehicles don't necessarily carry a business, so we are most concerned with the business.
Right. Oh, yeah, basically. I mean, if somebody, I guess, is advertising that they're selling their car, I mean, I guess we're gonna allow that, but...
No.
I guess you gotta, you gotta really get that clear because everybody is looking for that one little crack in the, in the dike that they can slither through and say, "Well, I don't fit this exactly," you know, they want it so that there's no ins or outs about, no gray areas, and we gotta try the best we can to, you know, otherwise you're gonna wind up with all kinds of vehicles sitting on the property because they don't qualify under the Florida law as a commercial vehicle.
Dan, at one time, there were no SUVs allowed at one time, and no pickup trucks were allowed here, and there were no advertising, advertising on cars.
Back when I moved in, it was like that.
There were no...
Well, I'm just reading what it says here.
And it was never changed, and it was never changed, so they changed the SUVs because people have families, so that was changed. But they never allowed trucks, the trucks, I'd like to see the amendment where it says trucks were allowed, and also the advertising.
Okay, I'm reading in your rules and regulations, under parking areas. Parking areas assigned to each owner are for the use of non, uh, personal non-commercial vehicles only. Each occupant shall park his/her vehicle in the parking space assigned to the unit and building. Commercial vehicles parked overnight will be towed at the owner's expense. That's where it stops. It doesn't talk about signage, it doesn't talk about trucks, it doesn't talk about pickup trucks, it doesn't talk about any of these items, and this is why we're having a problem. Because when we go and ticket them and tell them that they're not allowed to be on the property, and they come and say, "Show me where it says that," and I show them this, they're saying, "I am not a commercial vehicle."
Okay, I, I have read that as well. However, they have been, just like we put out bulletins all the time, there have been bulletins put out with reference to no commercial and no signing, uh, uh, no advertisement on car. They, I mean, if you go back into your, I mean, you had to keep all this stuff. I've kept things for many years.
I haven't been the property manager for forty-five years.
I didn't say...
That the previous managers kept such terrible records, you would not believe.
You can't go, you can't, you can't, you know, anybody else.
Well, you're telling me that I should have it, but I don't.
I said, you can't throw away these things, they have to be...
They do, because they're nowhere in the office.
So you don't have condo...
There is a one shred that says that in the office, okay? So, we're trying to address this situation now.
I'm gonna go to what I have, sorry.
Dan, you don't have condo docs?
Pardon me?
Do you have a...
That will not be in the condo docs.
No, that's not in the condo docs.
That's, that's a rule, not, not anything in the...
Well, before I take anymore from, from the membership outlines, now what the board feels. Rabbit, did, I think you requested this item on the agenda, so what did you want to do about this?
Yeah, because it's... It, it's been an issue, and quite frankly, the area by the tennis court looks like a commercial parking lot. When I first came here, I thought I was told, "If you couldn't have a truck, period," okay? Now, not only do we have the ones with the signage on, we have trucks with ladders on, toolboxes on. Are we gonna include those? I think it, it looks like a commercial vehicle to me, even though the law says a commercial vehicle, you have to have a commercial driver's license for. And then it goes by tonnage. It doesn't, a pickup truck does not come under a commercial vehicle. So, we, we've gotta be specific here, and if we're gonna, and I was sure when I came here, said no trucks. And I don't know if that got changed, when it got changed, but I think Marcy is right, said no trucks, period.
No motorcycles.
And no signage.
And no motorcycles.
Well, you've got motorcycles in here now.
No, that's why the motorcycles go on, on the side.
I, I understand, and, and when I came here, there was no previous manager to tell me, "This is this, this is that." I picked up the rules and regulations, and I've been going by what's written here, that these were amended in 2015, and that's what I've been going by ever since. If it said in here that there was no signage allowed on cars, those cars will be out of here in a heartbeat. I have no problem towing cars, believe me.
But what the rabbit is saying, the parking area near the tennis courts, that, oh, they used to have people that were snowbirds, they would park there and have their cars covered. That was allowed, that's, I don't know if you remember that, but that was allowed years ago, right across the street from the eighto wise, that parking area there, that you park their car as long as it was covered. What?
They used to have RVs there.
They had two RVs then, one George bought one.
Right.
George bought one of the RVs from the guy from the Zurich, from the Zurich, remember?
Okay, we're, we're a little off topic here, so let's try to bring this back here. Dan, didn't we just send out, so, you know, a notice of change of rules?
Not yet.
No, it hasn't gone out yet? It hasn't gone out yet?
No.
It's being printed, or what?
Yes.
Okay, so if, if this is something they were proposing, why don't we hold that printing? If we're gonna make another change, rather than have to send two mailings out. Can you call the printer and tell him to stop the printing?
I think he did it already.
Oh, he did it already? He did it already?
Yeah, I think he did it already, he picked it up today, he said, "I'll have it."
He's printing?
Yeah, but...
But if this is only done today, why, why do we have the printers start printing today when we were already...
No, 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 this, this was your previous, your previous, uh, change allowed it to do.
I'm saying, the printer picked up some rule change today, when this was gonna be on the agenda tonight, why?
Why? Yeah, why?
Because we were told to get it done.
Okay, so, okay, so there's no, no reason other than...
What was it told? It wasn't at the last meeting.
Yeah, it was at the last meeting, when we changed the rule regarding trailers and jet skis.
Okay, why don't we just find out if, if they've actually printed it?
Okay.
No, if they, if they haven't printed it... We'll call them, we'll call them in the morning.
Call them in the morning. If they haven't printed it, then we can stop the printing and add this. Otherwise, I don't think it makes a lot of sense to send out a second printing, like, a week or two later. If, if, if that's already gone out, and it's already been printed, then this one can go in the, uh, in the mailing that goes out with the budget, which would be in, um, November.
What is it going to say? What is it going to say?
It would be in November.
No, what is it going to say, this printing that you want done? What is it going to say?
The, the previous rule that we voted on was, was about the, uh, the jet ski. That one apparently is just being printed now, it was sent to the printer today. Uh, this one here, what I'm saying is...
So what's, what's happening with those jet skis that are on the other side of the, not even, what's happening?
Oh, nothing is happening.
Oh, okay.
This is just to make sure it goes out to the membership, so they know what the, what the rule is, all right? Because we have to do it. Um, what I'm saying is, is, I, I don't think it makes any sense to send another mailing in a couple of weeks for another rule change, you know? Um, so, first, what I'd like to see is if, if there's a consensus on the board to do this rule change. If so, we can take, we can piggyback on the next mailing, if that one hasn't been printed yet, and, and send it out in November when we, when we do the, uh, the budget.
Is it gonna be called grandfathered in? Are they gonna consider grandfathered in?
Well, we're proposing a change, is what I'm understanding.
So if it, so if you're gonna propose a change, that means that from that fault, from that point on, you can't go back for people that are grandfathered in?
Oh, I see what you're saying. So you're saying, if somebody has a commercial vehicle now, uh, would, would a rule change affect them? I think it would, because if the rule, if there's a new rule, it affects the entire property. You can't say, "Well, these people are grandfathered in because the rule changed after." I mean, I'm not an attorney, but I, I think if you change the rule, and you send out the notice to everybody, that's letting everybody know that this is the new rule that you have to abide by. I'm not an attorney, but I think that's how it would work.
But effectively, today, it's like somebody having a dog, and, and, and they've had dogs prior to this, and now you're going to like...
Okay, well, I mean, we're getting, I'm kinda watching off on that one, but yeah, we have a question back there.
Okay, if the board knows that there's a rule in fraction, and you don't stop it, and you let it keep going, that's how the grandfather works. In other, if you, I mean, there, there are windows that are put in illegally, there's other stuff, you know, busted windows here, and it's been going on forever, if the board is aware of it, and if they don't do anything and stop it, the people are grandfathered in.
But that's not the issue, the issue, what she was asking is if, if the rule changes now, and we put out a rule change, if the people that, uh, you know, are violating that new rule, would they be, uh, under the new rule? And I think the question, the answer to that question is yes, I think they're gonna do a rule.
They'll be grandfathered, they'll be grandfathered in because the board is aware of it now.
No, 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 what, what, the question, the issue here is not, the issue here is about changing the rules. The issue here is about changing the rules, so, they're not, in other words, right now, they're not violating the rules because the rules don't, uh, supposedly, it doesn't exist regarding signs. Now, what the question was, I think, that Marcy was asking was, let's say now, we send out a rule change saying, "We're gonna ban signs." Does that affect everybody right now that has a vehicle with signs? I think, I think it does, because if they get, they, they're getting the notice too. But again, I'm not, I'm not an attorney, but I just think that's how it works, we'll be checking.
Because John, that is grandfathered in, when something is grandfathered in, and then you can't go in and you'll...
I'll, I'll, I'll call, I'll call the DBPR.
We'll, we'll check.
No, but, no...
I'll call the DBPR about it.
You can call all you want, but if something is grandfathered in, you can't change, you can't change.
We need to move on, though, um, so Rabbit, are you... Do you agree with the wording that, uh, that Dan said regarding the explicitly pointing out signage? What was the wording?
Uh, that we, that we say that any vehicle with, uh, advertising or...
Take out the word "commercial" and replace it with the word "business." Now they can't wave this, "I don't have a commercial license," at. It's a business-purposed vehicle versus passenger cars.
Well, we've, we've got passenger car with writing on it, so we need, we need to...
That's a business-purposed vehicle. The word "business," what I'm saying is, it's semantic, take out the word "commercial" because that's what they're using to get around it.
Right, right. Well, we want, we want to add, we want to add to this, not, because I don't want anybody that does have a commercial vehicle now say, "I can get in."
Or "business."
Okay, so Dan, could you give us the, the wording, um, use this suggestion that Kirk, that, well, what's the exact wording that you wanna change here?
Uh, that any, any vehicle with this business-purpose, uh, signage is not allowed to park overnight?
Wait, wait, wait.
So...
Take, take the existing language and tell me what changes, I'm looking at the existing language. What here changes?
Uh, business purp- purpose vehicles parked overnight.
Where, where? I, I don't know where you are, tell me.
Uh, number one, the last sentence.
Okay, "Commercial vehicles," it says?
Yeah, and change that to read, "Business-purpose vehicles parked overnight will be towed at the owner's expense."
Where, where are the signs around here that say this, please? Where are the signs that say, "No commercial, uh, trucks allowed overnight already in that?" Where are, where are that, where are those signs, you know, John?
Signs?
Yeah, signs, you know, like, no dogs allowed, no cats allowed, no not feet, drugs, you know, things like that.
So, business-purpose or commercial vehicles? Parked overnight will be towed at the owner's...
If we had a sign for each one of these rules, we would be littered with signs on it.
A quick question, because if you buy a unit, and before you close on the unit, you end, reveal that you have a job, that they send home a vehicle such like this with you. There's nowhere to put it, there is nowhere to take it, nowhere to send it, it comes home with you because you are the company representative using the vehicle. And you were approved by the board, they said, "Not a problem," and they gave you a decal to come and park. What do you do now? Change your job? Sell a unit?
Keep the car.
We're, we're going to find out exactly whether these vehicles are grandfathered in. I will call the, the, uh, the Department of Business and Professional Regulations tomorrow, and put that question to them, whether or not these vehicles now become grandfathered in.
Every, every condo is different, so if you're gonna...
And they all have to go under the DBPR.
No, they don't.
Yes, they do, Marsha, you're not, you know, you should get your license to become a property manager.
My name is not Marsha, okay, that's number one. Number two, this is a private condo, it's a private...
We, we are moving a little too, um, we're, we're taking too much time on this one, we have several more items.
Yeah, but John, this is a private property, and we can do certain things on our own here. Maybe the DBP says certain things, but we can override that to say, "Hey, you know what? These people have their grandfathered in." Nothing is legal, probably, in a vehicle, you gotta get out of there.
Okay, okay. Well, we could put that language in, Marsha, we could put that language in the rule itself and say, if we decided to say, except for, you know, grandfathered in, anybody before this period, before this stage is grandfathered in. Um, but again, I don't know what the exact language is that you want, you wanna change "commercial vehicle" to "business-purpose vehicles"? Would that, Rabbit, would that satisfy?
That's kind of broad, because I go...
Commercial slash business-purpose vehicles with signage parked overnight will be towed at the owner's expense.
Or without signage, also.
What about without, what's... So my Sequoia...
Well, then, then we don't need signage at all, it's with or without, it's just like an absolute...
Red has no sign.
Police is not business, police is not a business, it's public, it's a public sector. That's not, that's not business, police is not business, it's a public sector. Anyway, um, we need to, we need to move on. Okay, Dan, can we move on? All right, so the language was business purp- oh, I'm sorry, business-purpose, commercial or business-purpose vehicles?
Okay.
With or without signage?
Here's the whole thing, from all number one. Okay, parking spaces assigned to each owner are for the use of personal passenger vehicles only. Each occupant shall park his/her vehicle in the parking space assigned to the unit and building. Commercial business vehicles with signage parked overnight will be towed at the owner's expense.
With signage?
With signage, yes.
With or without, right?
How can you without?
Well, because you have an open bed, you have an open bed, and they have toes in it, that's without.
With or without?
That can be your personal vehicle.
I, I don't know if that works, with or without. That's like not having the word in there in the first place. You can't say "without signage," you can't.
If I have that, if I have a big SUV, what is this now, commercial, company...
Because you're using it for work, then you can't...
This is my private, my SUV, a big one, okay?
I don't think you can say "without signage," I can't, I don't think you can say "without signage," you gotta say "with signage."
Well, I don't have a sign, I want to be in.
Anyway, um, we need to, we need to move on to think, the reason I'm not tabling it right now is because we have a big question mark as to whether or not these, this other rule has been printed yet. And if it hasn't been printed yet, then I would rather hold off on that printing and add this one, this one on it. But if it's already been printed, then I would be okay with tabling it, but right now, because of that, I don't know if we should table or not. But since we already discussed this, let's, let's go ahead and reprove that. Rabbit, if you're okay with that language? We can pass it either way, I'm saying, since we already spent this much time on it, we may as well, right? Right, so, so, so we can go ahead and pass it now, and, uh, and then, um, we can add it if, if it hasn't been printed. So, Rabbit, are you okay with that wording? It's with signage, not with or without, by the way, yeah?
Listen, as a real sir, the, the office says police won't allow any vehicles with trucks on with signage, and all the reasons are that, so we don't tell, we don't allow them in in the first place.
Yeah, what you're saying is like, okay, so add additional language to grandfather in any existing business, uh, vehicle, right?
First of all, it has to be registered here.
Okay, so Dan, whatever, we'll figure out the wording on that one, but, uh... Except for grandfathered, except for those grandfathered in under the old rule, whatever. Uh, we'll, we'll figure out the wording, but basically, yeah.
If they've already been approved by the board, like Haka has a sticker, that, that, that she's approved, that, that is grandfathered in, the other ones that just come in and, you know, go in the middle of the night and come and go, Haka is illegal because the board approved her, they even put the sticker on herself, so that's good. But you have a truck that has a sticker, and he just comes in, first of all, how do you get in it?
Okay, so we can add, like, language, like, say, with the exception of any, any vehicles already grandfathered in, um, and, and registered with the office. Okay, all right, so anyway, uh, Rabbit, do you wanna make that motion? Is there a second?
Probably should be encouraged that a copper...
Right, second, is it? And again, if, if that rule hasn't been printed yet, we add it, if not, we'll piggyback on the, on the budget, all right? Uh, any objection? Hearing none is approved. Next item. Uh, clubhouse furniture, Dan?
Yeah, um, we have a couple of couches that are in very bad need of, uh, reupholstering. I got, I was able to get two, uh, bids to do the reupholstering. Uh, one was for, uh, nine hundred and fifty dollars for each sofa, and the other one was for... Can I finish talking, please? Thank you.
One person at a time right now, Samantha, please do notch out, okay? Dan, go ahead.
And the other one was very expensive for, uh, two thousand eight hundred and ninety dollars for, for both of them. Uh, then we looked, and we found, uh, a new couch that could be bought for five hundred and ten dollars.
If you go to the thrift shop, you can get it for less.
Uh, Rabbit, I think this is, uh, an item that you brought up at, uh, one of the previous meetings, so, um, how do you feel about, about this?
We can buy a new one for five hundred and ten dollars, why would we pay, uh...
Exactly. What kind is that, though?
Pay twenty-eight ninety for, to get two reupholstered.
Um, the other one is nine fifty for each, so that would be nineteen hundred with the two. But that's a, I'm just...
What does the new one look like? It's a couch, what kind is it, leather, not leather, plastic?
Yeah, it's, uh, it's actually a, a, uh, like a vinyl, like we have the blue ones out there. It's, it's kind of tucked it back, it's where it's, you know... It, it looks pretty much the same as the one we have.
That's, that, that's two at five-ten, Dan, is that right? Five-ten each?
Five-ten each, yes.
Uh, the regular price was one thousand two hundred and fifty.
That's correct, huh? That's correct.
I make a motion that, uh, we buy two new ones instead of reupholster.
We have a motion and a second to, uh, purchase the two new couches. From digitalbuyer.com. Okay?
Are they the same size, by the way?
They're identical, right?
Are they the same size?
Yep. Okay, uh, is there any objection? Hearing none is approved, that's two, okay? Uh, next item is the dance floor?
Right, this was another item that was mentioned last, uh, month about replacing the dance floor. Uh, I went to Dolphin Carpet and Tile, uh, they will replace the dance floor for twenty-one hundred dollars. And I also went to Broward Discount Carpet, who has been doing the carpets in the, uh, the buildings, and they quoted me, uh, three thousand three hundred and eighty-three dollars to replace the floor. These will both be the same type of laminate floor, uh, that's waterproof, and, uh, they will install that, both. I would say Dolphin is a much better deal, since it's almost a thousand dollars less.
And that's in the same, is that in the same...
Does that include labor?
It includes labor, yes.
Is that in that just that one area?
Yes, just that one dance floor area. It will, it will not be park gate floor as what's out there now, it'll be just...
Okay. Do we have a motion? Rabbit, you wanna move it? Uh, you wanna second it, Carl? Rabbit moved it, okay. Carl has seconded, uh, this is for the dance floor, um... Dolphin, there's no vote yet, there's a motion and a second. This is for, um, the Dolphin Carpet and Tile proposal to replace the dance floor in the clubhouse at twenty-one hundred dollars, labor included. Uh, there's a motion and a second, and now, anybody on the board, uh, here you are.
Yeah, um, Alberto's good with doing floors, why don't we get him to do and buy the stuff and let him install it? Cause he did my tile, it's beautiful.
Okay, Dan?
He can lay, ask George.
Cannot give you a receipt, and then it's not good for the budget.
Bro. Dan, what do you think?
Listen, uh, can you listen, please?
Yes, sure.
We're talking about the dancing floor, it's not the regular floor for living like we have in the apartment, okay? See, you have been, the Mexican guys, they danced the last time, and this wood is not good. They broke it all, in one instance, okay? You have to ask, buy a professional floor for dancing. If you wanna put only for decoration, dancing, that'll be the wrong, it's not, it's not gonna work, okay? Uh, this floor we can put it, no, no, it's no big problem, the problem is, this dance is not gonna resist anything we do.
This is only, but I'm looking at the labor, it looks like it's a total of, uh, four hundred and forty-five dollars in labor, so it's not really that much.
If, if, everybody understand what I say, all right? If somebody's coming in a dancing, like, if we danced the last time, a couple of times in there, this floor is not, um, the system, one dancing, I guarantee.
So George is...
Okay, what I say to you, we have to put the same floor we have now in there, uh, put it.
Okay, but we're not putting the same type of flooring, because that's, we're putting laminate, but they're...
Laminate in there, it's not gonna work.
But, so tell that to Dan.
What we have in this is real wood, you can see it's real wood.
What kind of floor is that, okay?
So you're saying this won't work? Uh, George is saying you don't agree with, uh, you don't recommend this?
For me personally, I don't recommend.
We can table it, let's table it.
Buy something, like, we have now.
We have more items, yeah, let's, let's table, you wanna table it?
I guarantee it's not gonna cost the money, like, the money was, now it's more, more expensive.
Okay, let's table this and, and see if we can get some, um, prices on hardwood floor, uh, Dan, for the next meeting. So, uh, we have a motion to table on the dance floor. Dance floor, oh, okay, we have a motion and a second to approve, but let's, let's reverse that. Uh, Rabbit, you wanna move to table it instead? And, uh, Carl, would you like to second that on the table? Okay, so we're tabling, uh, any objection on tabling, hearing none is approved, it's table, uh, for, until the next meeting. Next item is the tree trimming proposals, Dan?
Yeah, uh, I didn't wanna let it go like we did last year and have them not come in until almost the end of August, and then, uh, we had Irma come along, and they had to stop and all of that, so I went out and got, uh, proposals. Uh, this is the first one that's on here, I, this is the same company that was out here. Um, last year, we found out that they didn't have a license, and they didn't have insurance. Uh, George brought this in, and they show a license number. I went to sunbiz.org, which lists every corporation in the state of Florida, and these people do not have a license, so, but they are still on here, and besides that, they were extremely expensive. Uh, so I would say that you guys just forget about them, their, their grand total was almost seventy thousand dollars. To trim the trees. The, uh, next one is Green Experts, they came out, um, I believe this is the one... The, uh, next one is Green Experts. They came out. Um, I, I believe this is the one that you met with me also, Rabbit. This was the young guy? Right, right. Their proposal was for, uh, fifty-four thousand nine hundred and seventy dollars. Uh, Michael's Tree Service was for fifty-two, uh, thousand three-